Come on, have a blast, and I am pleased to give you whatever observations I have. First off, there are people I need to thank and introduce for being here, for being here tonight. Our sound man is Zach DeLeche. He's come out early, set everything up, and is here, and I appreciate very much what you're doing to make this a successful event. Specifically, I'd like to thank Pastor Craig Sweeney and Assistant Pastor Tim Layfield of the Heights Church for allowing us to have this event here in town. Finding a location for an event like this is not easy. There are not a whole lot of facilities where you can put thirty or forty people in a room, where you can have a stage, and where you can have the opportunity to interact with the public. So I greatly appreciate this room and the Heights Church for supporting us. I have had the opportunity to introduce, of course, Diane Abbott Reilly, who is the Executive Director of the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce and did most of the hard work getting the information out about this event. And then we have Carol Malco, who is a board member of the Chamber. I'm a board member of the Chamber. And we have a couple of other important dignitaries. Tim Schaefer, council member, has joined us tonight. And Portia Middleton's the mayor, so she'll get introduced later. I don't know what the protocol is for introducing somebody who's important to the city at your event and then also in the speaker. And then, of course, Ash Feeney, who is our city manager. Thank you all for coming out. Is there anybody I missed? Oh, Andrew. Andrew Van Dugger, my good friend and fellow Toastmaster. Andrew is the timer, and this is for all of you. We are real sticklers for time with a lot of people here and a lot of questions. We really need to try to stick to the timed schedule. So Andrew has a yellow card that we're going to throw up at thirty. We have thirty seconds left in that section. And then he can start thinking of something enough, and then he's going to turn it to stop. And when he says stop, you have enough time for one last sentence. And after that, I'll probably interfere and ask you to stop talking. We have a microphone, two microphones, and I guess we use one for these three and one for these. Can you check that just to be sure that's alive? Just say something.
One, two, three, four.
Ten, one, two.
Okay, so we have sound, we have a stop sign, we have a start sign, and now we have questions. Is everybody okay with what we're doing? And the way, just to let you know, the way the question, we drew cards for the seats. So they're random drawings for the seats. And the question, the first question will start with seat one, and then we'll go down the line. The second question will move to seat two and down and back to one. So that everybody has, it's not going in the same order every time. It's an opportunity for everyone to start fresh on each question. I have forty-five questions, and we'll go through as many as we have time for. All right? We all have names. We have the right names in front of our candidates, and thank you candidates for coming out. And what we're going to do with question number one is give you an opportunity. Please introduce yourself to our audience. Why are you the best candidate for one of the three city council seats? What skills and talents do you offer the City of Citrus Heights as a council person? And we'll try to do this one in sixty seconds, because there'll be a lot more time to me and for more comments. So Natalie, it's all yours. So you need to do that.
Hi, everybody. My name is Natalie Price, and I am the best candidate for a city council in District Five because I'm a business professional with over fifteen years of leadership experience. I'm a ten-year resident of Citrus Heights, and I have a bachelor's degree in cultural anthropology. I'm a mother of five, which means I'm very skilled in conflict negotiation. And I am also very skilled in the art of coexistence. I think that's helpful. I bring fresh eyes to old problems, and I'm ready to tackle our current challenges of growing homelessness, crumbling infrastructure, and fiscal sustainability. We have a proud history of fiscal prudence, but over time, we've had compounded problems and fiscal deficits. My priorities are safe communities, strong businesses, and a sustainable future. As a seven-year member of Lions Club, your vice president of Reach, and a community liaison for Area Ten Neighborhood Association, I would say that I am a resilient restaurateur ready to serve you.
Good evening. My name is Al Fox. I'm a former city councilman, former planning commissioner, chairman of the planning commission. I am currently the probably the most experienced of the candidates running for District Four in that I have served the city in different capacities over seven years. Since my time on the city council, the last four and a half years, I have served as a volunteer representative to our schools, representing a charity which is part of this church, providing services, goods, and information to our schools during the COVID time. My leadership ability has been proven through my time working with the city council, working with the planning commission, and my experience serving the city, I think, is second to none.
Well, hello. I'm Steve Durham. I'm a five-year resident of Citrus Heights. I have a lot of academic background in this area, so I thought I'd bring it to the table. I actually have a master's degree in urban geography and studies from the University of South Carolina. And I have an MBA in business from Harvard Business School. I've had over fifty years of business experience, almost twenty-five as a COO. I've negotiated deals. I was also a signatory on a public good trade television network. And I've written lots of business plans, and I just really want to, that's all I have.
Good evening. I am Portia Middleton, and I currently serve as your Mayor of Citrus Heights. I've served the council for the last four years, and I've worked with all of my colleagues to improve our roads, strengthen public safety, and support our business community. My roots began in public service in childhood. My father served our country for several generations. My family actually served several generations. My father was the latest sergeant major at Rayford. I grew up in a middle child of nine, had eight brothers, and I've traveled all over the world. I was very fortunate to be able to do that. But my husband and I of fifteen years call Citrus Heights home. For the last seven years, we've raised our two boys, attended schools in our city. I served as council member and a mayor of our city, and proudly earned my master's degree while educating my two boys at home during one of the most difficult times in our history.
My name is Mike Mishamura. Currently, I am on the planning commission. I served twelve years on the Sunrise Marketplace Board of Directors. I manage, my claim of fame at Citrus Heights is I managed the Elephant Bar for fourteen years. But prior to that, I also managed the El Torino back in the days, back in the eighties and nineties. So I've managed restaurants in the marketplace for almost twenty-five years. I spent nine years at El Torino, over fourteen years at Elephant Bar. Currently, I am the president of Reach. I've been the president of Area Nine Neighborhood Association. Currently on the board with the Chasing Neighborhood Association. I'm on the Citrus Heights Water District Customer Advisory Committee. I've been very active in the community. I work a lot with heart, doing a lot of volunteer work. And I've stayed active and keep up on everything that goes on within the city.
Hi, my name is Mary Jane Lopez Taft. Most of you know me as Jane. I am a twenty-two-year resident of Citrus Heights, and I am ready for the District Two City Council Member position. The skills and talents I offer the city is perspective. As a business owner, I have a perspective on economic development. As a homeowner and rental property owner, I have a perspective on keeping our property values high and keeping our neighborhoods safe. As a citizen and taxpayer, I believe in improving use of taxes. And as a mother, I want an improved relationship with our school district. Thank you.
Thank you all. We're going to start the second question out. Now, this one's for, there are two different questions. One is for the incumbents, for people who have served, so you can take this whichever direction you want. The incumbents, as a council member, what has been your greatest accomplishment? For the rest of you, and I can repeat these questions if you feel the need, is for the new candidates, how many city council meetings have you attended? How often have you made comments before the city council? What issues have you raised, and what's the outcome? So I'm looking for the engagement with the city council. And you'll have ninety seconds on this one, it's a little complicated. Have at it, Al.
Thank you. Once featured on the city council, one of the jobs you have is to serve the city as a city's representative to the different boards and commissions that are held throughout the county. Some of those have very much to do with the amount of money we are able to get back to our city from broad area taxes, joint jurisdiction taxes. One of, I think, my greatest accomplishments is when I was on the STA, the Sacramento Transportation Authority. We had a certain amount of money that was supposed to come to Citrus Heights for our transportation needs, that is dollars collected from you in a tax initiative where we paid a portion of sales tax, I believe it was a passent, into that joint fund. When it all came out towards the end of the first accounting, first and third, first, second, and third accounting periods, we lost several millions of dollars that did not come to Citrus Heights. I was able to, with, and things started by Mel Turner, ended by Steve Miller, to get at least a portion of that funds brought back to our city and placed in our transportation budget. I think of all the different boards and commissions we've served on, that was probably the best achievement because it best served what we needed and what was coming to us from money we had already paid into county-wide funding.
Okay, as a candidate, I have watched about six meetings on YouTube, and I've read through the minutes of most of the meetings of 2022. I haven't attended any meetings in person because I don't like COVID. And I'm certainly overall, well, I think the biggest problems facing the city are ones that face every city, crime, traffic, homelessness. But there are many things that we as a city can solve, but there's others things that we have to lean on the state and federal government to help us out. Homelessness, for example, is not just a Citrus Heights problem. It's everybody's problem. We've got to do something about it. We need to bring in revenue for our businesses. We need to make sure the homeless aren't sleeping on the sidewalks outside our businesses. We need to make Citrus Heights a place where people want to live. And that is about what I've got to say. My most limited needs are, you know, remote.
Okay, there we go.
You don't, you don't like to turn the mic off if you, I think you just, it is obvious.
Great. So my greatest accomplishment will be improving the quality of life for our residents and our business owners. And this includes chanting for fifteen million dollars of transportation funding to pave streets in our city, allocating grants to local businesses and nonprofits who were impacted by COVID, and supporting the Sunrise Tomorrow specific plan that will catalyze our small mall and spur our local economy, and supporting funding for our police department to hire more officers and replace aging equipment and vehicles to help and keep our community safe. And if you watch my council meetings, you know I'm brief.
You know, I can't, I don't know how many council meetings I've attended. Several over the last few years. I've spoken before the council on behalf of Reach, on behalf of Sona, which was the Sunrise Oaks Neighborhood Association, primarily when they were talking about putting an article on PM on Sun Garden and Sunrise. I've spoken several times. I ran for city council six years ago, and I knew the time was going to come where that, that, that those council members were not no longer going to be around. And I ran six years ago to gain that experience. In that time, I've kept up on the city's affairs. I'm now part of the planning commission. And I just feel that now is the time for me to step up and put my name in the hat to run for city council.
I have attended both online and in person for the last year solidly. Prior to that, I was a traveling trainer, so I worked ninety percent out of town. But when I decided to put my head in the game, the meetings, where were you getting information? The one time that I made a comment, it was regarding the distribution of parking funds and a request to add citizens as voices to the group that would make those decisions for allocation. I really believe that citizens should have a voice with their city council, whether it be informally or formally. It shouldn't just be elected officials who may or may not go out to the various areas to have these discussions prior to decision-making. But more importantly, I have not only met with people inside the city council meetings, I've decided to meet with people who have established our city individually to seat them out and make sure I know their opinion and their historical reference to what makes our city great. I've also sought out city staffers to get their perspective. And again, I'm all about perspective. My perspective as a citizen, their perspective as city officials, and state staff perspective as individuals who are employed by Green City.
All righty. So I have been to every council meeting since I have decided to run. Prior to that, they were few and far between. I've watched them now, like my colleagues, since I've decided to run. I've gone back about a year and a half watching video, reading minutes. I've read the hundred-and-eighty-four-page budget. That's very, very throwing. You should do that. And I spend a lot of time with my neighborhood association meetings. So I go to Area Ten monthly. I go to the Reach meetings monthly when we talk about the strategic plan and that active engagement in your community. Hello, Natalie Price. I spoke for the council one time. It was for a community project. We're empowering our youth to do community service projects. I've created videos to go behind council and show them what we've done with our neighborhood improvement funds. We've partnered with Meals on Wheels, and we've collected donations so that we can serve our underserved senior populations who are on a limited budget. I created a fabulous video that went behind the council for that. That's about all I've got to say.
Our next question, without discussing homelessness, because it will be the question after this question. What are your top three priorities for the City of Citrus Heights? How would you like to address these priorities? We're going to give you two minutes to go through that. And Steve, you're taking off.
One of the things that I hear at the Chamber of Commerce meeting is we need to build our sales tax level. We need to watch and work strongly as to what's going to happen with Sunrise Mall because that will affect everybody. I still have clients that are in many industries. I've done many things, and I've seen like, where's the best place to open a restaurant? Next to another really good restaurant. That's what you've got to do. So we've got to work on ways to get more revenue in, attract businesses. We have very few office spaces, for example, in here, but yet people are flocking to our area from the Bay Area and moving here. And all the office thing is now by the airport. That doesn't do us anything. So we've got to actively work towards bringing all sorts of revenue in here. And number two, traffic is an issue. A lot, I live on the Oak Avenue, and that's become a mini freeway. And we have to have more traffic guys because, I got to tell you, one of my neighbors was killed, and I'm honored. And it's a dangerous street right now. People fly down, they fly down fair roads, or cannon. These are all streets that are becoming like minimal freeways. So you've got to be really careful. I think that also, we have to, we have to make it a more wifey town. I really think, we're building some new houses near, near the mall, and they're lovely, but they don't have any trees. We need to have more trees. Trees produce oxygen. They also increase home value. So we've got to get things like that. So the obvious things are fighting crime, that's it.
Okay, so priority number one is to boost our business economy. We all know that. We need more people shopping in our business, supporting the chambers to retain their businesses. Chamber does a lot of work for us to help us retain businesses. It is just as important as the work that our city staff does. Leveraging the voices of our staff to bring new businesses to our city by Green Acres, R B to Cantina, Crumble, and many others is what's going to be critical to make sure we are driving our economy. Which leads me to my next point. We need to make improvements to our infrastructure. This means paving roads, grounding utilities, bringing broadband and electric vehicle charging to Citrus Heights. If you want a bigger driving economy, you have to bring in the things that are going to attract the folks here to us. And my last priority is creating an environment where people come and raise their families. This means expanding our local trail systems, ensuring the sidewalks are in the perfect places so families can safely navigate throughout our community. Education is also important, and I'll touch on this briefly. While we don't have much to say for our school board, last summer, I did work with a group of parents to ensure that Citrus Heights has two board seats on school board so we can have a voice in the district who represents us.
I think for me is economic development. For twenty-five years, the city has depended solely on its sales tax. And at the end of revenue, we need to grow the quality. We're going to start getting our property tax if we can't count on that to survive. And it's going to be a tough nut with the Sunrise Tomorrow project. Sunrise Marketplace has been the economic engine for the city for twenty-five years. So we're going to have to look at areas around the city. I think Apple is a good place. But what I really like about Ash Feeney's strategic plan is seeking out as much grant funding as possible. But we need to try to incentivize bringing businesses into the city. I mean, everybody wants more restaurants, but where incentive is there for restaurants to move into the city? These businesses are closing because they can't survive. We need to try and create an environment, try and attract businesses that can survive, and try and make it, try to make the process, make it as attractive as possible to bring businesses into the city, and then try and generate business and draw business from outside the city to come into the city and shop here.
Just like my previous colleagues, I'm very much interested in economic development. But I look at it from a different perspective. I look at it from a business owner's perspective. Why would I want to move to Citrus Heights? And is the city, Citrus Heights, very important to me? No, what's actually important to me is traffic. How many cars will pass in front of my, my place of business? How many individuals are here to purchase something that I have to sell or offer? We have market corridors that are, that are ripe for redevelopment. And I know we have already begun those efforts. We have Auburn Boulevard and the Business Association there. Greenback Lane is looking so much more spruce up than it ever has in my twenty-two years here. And Sunrise Boulevard, how much real estate do we need to claim in order to say to a business, do you want tens of thousands of people to stop? Potentially stopping your business. And so my perspective for economic development is pump up the volume on the information that we have economic corridors that are important to their economic success. Also, safety is very important to me. I was very shocked when a budget was passed cutting our police force last year. It, it created shockwaves throughout the police force and the community that we are still paying for now. And so I encourage a fully funded police force on our budget continually. And finally, financial transparency. And this is not to say that the city is not transparent. What we need is a little translation. Most people don't understand how monies work in a city. Some are tax-funded monies, and some are grant, grant-given monies for specific projects. I think education will be the best route as far as financial transparency is concerned.
All right, without listing homeless, my top three priorities, concerns for this city are safe communities, infrastructure concerns, and keeping our taxes low. So for safe communities, I mimic what Jane says. We should have never defunded our police department. We should have never left vacant seats. And our community has felt the abuses because of that. So I would make sure that we always have proper funding for a full police department. I would want to look at rapid response teams for chronic nuisances. I know that right now, they're talking about having something similar connected to the ARPA funds, but those have a time limit on them. Two and a half years from now, we no longer have those funds, and we need to be able to sustain whatever program is coming. For the infrastructure, I would take a really deep look at our current resources and the parameters attached and make sure that we're using every dollar in the way that we can. I would offset anything that we can by building relationships with our community organizations, having them pick up projects that maybe will loosen a dollar or two here or there. I'm really good at running a family on a tight budget. I would take a look at our neutrality funds that Mike was talking about and where are they going? How much is going to infrastructure? Can we allocate any more if we reallocate elsewhere? I would support the strategic plan. Definitely work on that Sunrise Tomorrow and get it going. We had a huge investment doing the environmental impact report, and I think that we need to keep that going. That is a big incentive for businesses. For keeping our taxes low, I would improve housing in the workforce. I would share community resources to strengthen and support our current businesses. That'll give incentives for new businesses to want to come, and it'll strengthen our current economy here. I would improve neighborhood engagement, which is part of the strategic plan, by working heavily with neighborhoods, and that's going to pour back into our fiscal cycle. It would again offset project costs and build relationships in the community.
After spending thirty years in the law enforcement career, I understand the problems that exist in the police departments and in their ability to continue what they do on a regular basis during the type of budgeting we had during the COVID cycle. I don't think we ever defunded the police department, but we did have limited funds and could not afford to recruit and retain new personnel simply because of the limited funding. And we lost officers because, as in all police businesses, they go to other jurisdictions. They get recruited by other departments. So in terms of public safety, I would definitely encourage the continued hiring, training, and retention of good quality police officers. And we have that going for us. We just need to make sure or ensure that it is going to continue. I would look very strongly at trying to bring back the focused enforcement activities of the police department as budget monies were available, simply because they can then dedicate their time and their efforts back to specific problems within the community and address those. Problem-oriented policing was one of those. Traffic is another one of those that they need to present in order to be effective. But we have to have good, solid trained personnel to get there. The other one I would go with, which I think everybody else has talked about, is the economic development for our community. We are a very land-restricted city. We have no place to animals, but we have some fantastic opportunities in front of us in terms of Sunrise Mall, potential open land for infill developments, and the increase of our business, increasing those of our business districts. Auburn Boulevard, Greenback, and Madison. We have four of the strategic thoroughfare roads within SAC County that run right through our city. And there's where we have an opportunity to grow and increase our economic force and budget if we focus on those places and try very hard to make that occur.
Thank you. Now, we need to talk about...
Now, we need to talk about homelessness. It's a big issue, everybody is interested in what's going to happen. Start with you, Portia. How should homelessness be addressed within Citrus Heights?
As the former deputy director of Sacramento's Help Housing, I can talk to you all day long about homelessness, but I'll keep shorting Cory. Uh, homelessness is a regional issue and the state wants cities to fix this issue, but allocates the money to the county. And until we get our fair share of appropriate funding from the county, the city will continue to fund our navigators and renters help line with community development block grant funding we receive from the federal government. We also have to continue to support innovative solutions to keep people from becoming homeless in the first place and provide more affordable housing within our city. Some examples are the recent move-in to keep a senior apartment complex in our city being sold at market rate and pushing seniors onto our streets. And working with Habitat for Humanity to build affordable houses for low-income families who purchase. Mental health continues to be an issue that our police department sees for those who are experiencing homelessness. And it's beyond time for the county to fix their broken system and help these individuals. But if all else fails, the city anxiously awaits to see the results of the state post's care course that will give the city an opportunity to help these individuals. Citrus Heights has always been on the forefront of innovation, looking for solutions to problems where we don't have the control to actually do any of ourselves.
You know, I've been very active with HART in the last two years. And I like the approach that HART is taking right now is they're trying to be proactive with, with the homeless situations. I'm part of the committee for the rental assistance program. And before people go homeless, they vet people that possibly need help before they become homeless. Same thing with the Paul Vez, people form members as the HART, HART reviews the situation and if it's a fixable situation, they can, you know, that's not going to be a long-term, every month, getting money. Um, HART helps them. That's funded by the county, the, through the transient occupancy taxes that the city has. And the city grants, the last year was fifteen thousand dollars to HART. And, you know, I, if, I think HART's going, the HART, the homeless navigator, the police department, I think everybody's doing a good job with it in Citrus Heights. I mean, it's not an ideal situation, but if you leave the city limits, go into Real In The, cross the railroad tracks towards Oshil, or closer to Sacramento, it's a whole lot worse. And I think if we keep plugging away at it, it's, it, it will get better. It's just going to take a lot of time because, you know, it's not, it's not a crime to be homeless. And I think these people can be helped, that want to be helped. And like with Laura's Law, I think this, I think the city needs to work with the county as much as possible.
Homelessness is an issue that we all know is multifaceted. And this is one issue that I think as a city we can be most proud of in how we address it. We have a multi-pronged approach that many of my colleagues spoke about, where we have a homeless navigator program, HART, which provides resources to individuals. And it is true, homelessness does not occur in a vacuum. We have to acknowledge that there are other circumstances that create homelessness. We also know that our city is relatively free from the major troubles that other cities experience. If you really think about it, homelessness problems are on the edges of our city. But I know even when I have asked somebody or called the, the not emergency hotline about a particular issue, they've immediately come out through collaborative efforts and cleaned up that particular area. Now, some ideas I have is really borrowed from other organizations and particularly the Veterans Standout Organization. This is where they take, um, an event where they have services to individuals to directly help that group of people. Whether it be dental services, vision, haircuts, business suits, interviewing skills, mental health, uh, services, so that they, they can get off the streets and find their dignity once more to rejoin, uh, society as we know it.
All right, homelessness is, um, an extremely complicated issue right now. And unless we address all of its roots separately and simultaneously, this is going to be a long, drawn-out process with a lot of hardships for our taxpayers. I would address accessible housing by building relationships and giving more funding to organizations such as HART, making sure we're developing in a manner in which people can get low-income housing and have accessibility to it, helpful loans, navigate the process for grants, give them all the resources, share those community resources we have once again. I would address mental health by partnering with the county. That is a huge problem with our, our unhoused populations that are on the streets right now is, you know, schizophrenia and other mental health issues. My mother is schizophrenic and bipolar and would have been homeless if it wasn't for the advocacy of her children. Um, I know what it's like to have a fully functional adult who cannot care for themselves and makes poor choices that puts them on the street. With that being said, the drug issue needs to be handled. Our law enforcement officers need to have resources to rapidly respond. We need to get the, uh, syringes off of our streets, out of our businesses, and out of our parks. We need to have safe communities and I would target fast, rapid response teams that respond to businesses so that we can get proper citations and documentation to remove, remove chronic nuisances in a timely manner and improve public safety.
A lot has been said and I don't want to repeat it much, but I will say this. I believe our city has done an excellent job at working with the homeless population of trying to keep under control as best as possible within the laws and restrictions and court decisions that have placed upon us about what we can and cannot do with the homeless, where they live, how they exist, and what services are available. I think that we do need to work very strongly with the county and the state trying to make sure that we have sufficient funding to address the situations in Citrus Heights. But if you look around at some of the areas, our police department and our navigator system already have the homeless every morning cleaning up around where they've slept at night, where they've been. They've taken their grocery carts and their property, they've stacked it up and they've covered it, they've put it to the side, away from the walkways and away from the street. There are efforts being made that we need to applaud to address homelessness in Citrus Heights. A lot of the issues that we see are people coming in, homeless folks coming in from outside the city, coming into the city, looking for food, looking for handouts, looking for whatever services and things they can need, they can use. And we don't want to confuse those people with those who live in Citrus Heights all the time. But we have to remember, they do have the rights that the court has given them and we must, the city, address those. My focus would be on making sure and ensuring that we have the funding, the personnel, and the ability to continue to address those issues. Being on House City's position that too many people find themselves. There are SAC State students who are homeless. It's a regional problem, though. It's not a Citrus Heights problem. Citrus Heights has done, I think, a marvelous job of working with the problem. But the main thing we've got to do is work together with other cities because we're, can talk to the county, we can talk to the state, but if all the California cities get together and say, wait, we need more state help in addressing homeless issues. We need to prevent people from being homeless. That's the best way. And a large portion of the homeless population are people that have mental or drug issues and we have to help them. But we have to do it, not just saying, oh gosh, gosh, we're going to do it all. We don't have to do it all. We have to work with everybody in the county and other states.
I'm going to change my next question a little bit because you've already answered what I was asking about spending money. I was here when the Sunrise Mall was being built. I moved to Citrus Heights about nineteen seventy-one and Sunrise Mall was being built about that time. And then a couple of years later, Bird, Bird Cage Center was built. They actually had a bird cage there in Nice when I was growing up. It was a pretty cool place to go as a kid and movie theaters. We're going to start now with Michael and I, and I would like to know what your vision is of executing the specific plan for the, the mall property? Because if you're going to be on the council for the next four years, it's likely many of the decisions you make as a council will impact how that moves forward. So what's your vision for the Sunrise Mall property and how, how will you support that?
Well, there again, I like Ash Feeny's approach of trying to get some grant funding to help with the infrastructure because that is a major block for this project. It's a billion-dollar project and for developer to come in, there's got to be some kind of incentives for them to do that. You know, this is a twenty-year project. It's not going to happen overnight. I don't even know if I'm going to be alive by the time this project is finished. But they, it's, it's something that's got to happen. You got to start somewhere. And I like Ash's approach in trying to get some grant funding towards helping with that infra, infrastructure to try and incentivize developers to come in. In the past, you know, when I was on the Sunrise Marketplace board, we tried a vision project. And that was very hard because of the reciprocal lease bin agreement. And it's, it's something that we cannot depend on the Sunrise Mall's revenue like we have in the past. So we've got to try and make it as pleasant as possible, make it as attractive as possible for businesses to come in and developer to come in. And at the same time, focus our attention on the other businesses around the city. You know, there's some good development going on on Sunrise Madison. Um, ABBA, you know, as the Auburn Boulevard projects, uh, starts to ramp up hopefully, they could, you know, create a pubit there. But, um, just focusing our attention not only on the mall but others around the city.
Forgot to mention the time, about ninety seconds for this one.
All right. I am most excited about the Sunrise Tomorrow plan, but everybody is at a loss. How do we execute from here? We have done the hard work, the current city council has done the hard work of putting down all of the infrastructure in order to make the ground ready for individuals to be interested. I really believe the next five years are all about how are we going to market our city? Are we going to market Citrus Heights? Or are we going to market our economic corridors? I would like to suggest that we have economic corridors. That is the language of business and money. We need to market, we need to create a brand strategy about how Citrus Heights has more, uh, more frontage road to that particular development for an individual. Also, we need to do an analysis of what is needed. Is, uh, are restaurants needed or, like, I was delighted to see the Royal Theater come into play? Or do we need entertainment, culture, opportunities to gather for a different reason? Not just eating and, um, entertaining, you know, culture experiences. And I think we are just far enough from that Sacramento downtown to be able to make a splash here in what everybody knew as Sunrise would be.
When there is an event, my Lions Club is going outside the city. When there is an event, I am driving outside the city. Um, a big part of Sunrise Tomorrow for me is that event center that is a proposal. I know they've, uh, done the assessment and got it ground ready, so to speak, but what's actually going to be developed is still in the air. The event center to me is a huge revenue maker for this city. It will have constant turning over of income. You can do events more and more. You can get businesses involved in supporting the events. It's more sales, it's more people. You support that with the hotels they're talking about, then that's just more revenue, more reason to be here. And it'll set us apart and make us an economic hub around our, our area. Um, I would like to have dual-purpose facilities and I would be looking at our developers to give incentives to that. What does that mean? That's the housing above the business complex. That's tackling the issues of our unhoused, accessibility to housing right here while promoting the development of this center for more fiscal sustainability.
I think one of the big things I see with Sunrise Property is you've got multiple owners that you have to get to come together and help make decisions on how we go forward from here and the different aspects of what that property is about. But in the view of what it could be, I think around the country, in Northern California, Santana Row in the San Jose area is a prime example of what multifunction, multi-use properties can be. Downstairs, down lower level, businesses, retail, second levels, business centers, offices, tech centers, and above that residential. Not everything needs to be two, three, and four story size, but you need a core of those things to make things go. You need a very comprehensive building plan for residential use of that property, but has to be walkable. People want to be able to walk around, do things within the area they live, feel safe doing so. Family-friendly, we need to make it a family-friendly environment with the type of things that families can do together and they can constructively use the space that we're providing for them through the businesses and through the attractions that we bring to the city. It has to be a theater and community event center. This small room right here can hold seven women, it's sort of good, but we're not an event center. We're a part of a church organization here. But to have an event center that you can rent and you can do things within that corridor would be a fantastic opportunity. Again, big problem again with Sunrise Mall area is that there are multiple developers. You've got to get them working together. We have to incentivize builders to come here and develop. I would propose, for example, having some property tax holidays for a number of years, the first three years of operation, to encourage people to get some of their investment back or not, have a better return on investment. That in turn will bring up more sales tax revenue. We also need it to be the community center. Our, our city hall is kind of off and left feeling, guys. And it needs to be, we need to build around the Sunrise Mall. Like, we need swimming pools, we need hiking trails, we need more things to do outside. As, as you mentioned, Amberville is another good example of multiple use. Uh, they, they have a wonderful mall there, uh, that's outdoors and they have housing above it. And it's a lovely place. If people come, there are a lot of restaurants there. So that's what we've got to do. We've got to incentivize the developers to do something good and leave a little bit for the city to have to do something good.
I'm happy to say you're all right. You're absolutely correct. When I ran four years ago, that was my vision and my promise to the community, was to bring a plan about to that mall that we could wrap it around because too many people had changed hands with that mall ownership. And this was a way for us to stop them resplitting the lawns, to try to keep some cohesive sustainability there. So again, you all were right, but it's more than just what that plan was and how many bits and pieces of it. So it's a buffet of ideas and items that happened and it's flexible for twenty years. But what we have to do now is start selling it, showing why Citrus Heights, because we were having turnover in our residence, we're having new families come in. Why people want to come and live in our community. And we have to continue to develop our business corridors. We've watched that area going down, um, Greenback and Sunrise and how those businesses have come in there and have turned around, face-licking on Joann's. And I mean, I love Joann's, but I love it even more now. Hobby Lobby, okay? My husband can't keep me out of Hobby Lobby because I just like going over there and I, I like the feel of the vibe and I know the direction it's going. This was exactly what I envisioned when I made that promise to the community to bring this plan. So all we have to do now is sell it and that's why we have Ash Feeny, as I said, we're busy many.
Very good. You're all talking about broad plans for bringing something into Citrus Heights. There's a strategic planning goal to diversify for a changing economy. And I'd like to know if you have specific ideas on what a diverse Citrus Heights economy looks like? This one will be ninety seconds. And Jane, I think we're starting with you this time.
By virtue of definition, diver- By virtue of definition, diversification means there is more than one source. We all know that as homeowners. We all know that as individuals who have a budget. If you are dependent on one source for your money, if that source dries up, you probably have big problems for the rest of your expenditures, which never end. It's the same in the city. And I think we've done a good job with making sure that we are not one source for revenues in the city. We have property tax and yahoo, we finally get our money from the county of Sacramento. Very proud of that, very excited about that. Sales tax comes from our businesses. And the more we can bump up our business revenue, the more it will offset all the improvements we want to continue to do in those business corridors. And building fees. If you've been paying attention to any of the activity on city council meetings, we've talked a lot about fees and you're probably wondering, does that apply to me? Mainly it applies to an individual who is building in our city. And you might be thinking, we don't have a lot of areas to build in. But these are the sources that we have along with grant dollars that have nothing to do with going into your pocket as property owners.
For me, a diverse economy means that we're taking care of not only the businesses, but also the housing and the trails and anything that is going to draw people, draw money, and keep our fiscal sustainability. We need businesses that adapt to trends. We have a lot of box stores that are no longer being used as things are shifting to online. We have restaurants that are suffering as third-party delivery systems pick up. And we need to share all these sources in the community and empower these businesses to adapt to trends so that they can stay present for our community and encourage that fiscal sustainability. Once again, I go back to that event center. That would be huge for the diversification because it brings a lot with it. We need to share marketing tools that promote the campaign and the direction and the vision of Citrus Heights so that we can build up and build out.
One of the first things that I saw years ago was when you looked up Citrus Heights on Google, you came up with a nice city, suburb of Sacramento, housing's okay, school's not real good. If you look up Citrus Heights today, those things have changed. And we have some very strong support to continue that type of development and sustain our city as we grow. And that's something we need to do if we're going to diversify and do anything. We have to get with the times. We have to get with what is going on in the economic growth of this state in order to capture what we can to bring into our city. But we have to have development that is sustainable, that is affordable, and speaks to the needs of those folks that we want to call into our residents and into our schools and into our businesses. And I think that's the one thing diversity will give for us. If we do planned, intelligent planned communities, we will be able to grow Citrus Heights. And we've got some wonderful opportunities, get some infill project around Citrus Heights that may very well be that growing process started for us. One of the things that disturbs me is how a small percentage of people who live in Citrus Heights work in citizens. That's a big issue. There's no offices, there's just retail. There's no manufacturing, not really. You know, somebody changing your tire, that's not manufacturing. We have to do things to diversify, to create businesses here. And people want to stay here in Citrus Heights. They won't be shopping on the way home in Fair Oaks and using their grocery store there. They won't be stopping out to have lunch in Sacramento because they're working in Sacramento. We want to eat lunch here. We want to be lunch in the Elephant Bar Bar. Look at that. I love that. So diversification is major importance. And part of it is overall, oh, we've got to change. Well, we are. We should be more than just bedroom community. We have major traffic areas here that we can build out, quarters or factories. And we are actually in the center of a northern part of this, this county. And we should be taking advantage of that. So we must diversify. We must have a very solid plan. I hope to help that.
All right, guys. This question's going to help me because my city manager doesn't know this yet. Higher education is going to be key. So in those empty spaces, we need a satellite campus like Los Rios or American River College. And we need to create student housing in those empty buildings. Imagine if that Sunrise Mall, Mall is reimagined and becomes the heartbeat of what we're doing here in this community. We have students who are working, living, and enjoying our community. That, that means that business owners, restaurateurs have people right here who are going to school and are actually able to work a part-time job in the city. Reduces our vehicle miles traveling, reduces our carbon footprint. It solves a lot of problems for us. And if you combine that with our transportation goals of making things more walkable and creating an environment that people can easily get around, I'm still rooting for Bergscooter, tell you what. I mean, these are amazing. I'll never ride one, but I see why college kids love them because you have to sit around and get around really quick. But that's the only thing we're missing in this diverse economy and this diverse vision that we need for our city. So, um, hey, Ash, got to talk to you later.
You know, you talk about diversification and I've seen a lot of change. It's not nearly as much retail as it used to be. We've got medical complexes moving in. And I wish we had a crystal ball to know what was going to happen. I mean, 20 years ago, nobody expected COVID. That's why all the restaurants thrive on Central Lake Boulevard. Times change, people change. People don't want to go out to eat anymore. We have to adapt to that. I mean, in 15 years, we're not going to be able to buy gas in cars. So we need to start planning for charging stations. I hear a lot of people complaining about why are we worrying so much about housing law? Truth is, matters the state of California requires that we have communal housing needs requirements that we have to meet. We have to have affordable housing. There's a lot of rules and regulations that the state of California mandates on us that does not function for us. And we have to go, we have to stay within the rules of the state of California. And we have to adapt as we go along. We have a vision for the Sunrise Mall. Just need to keep moving along and adjusting as we go.
So there's been a lot of redistricting in the region. Modern districts are now by district instead of at large. The city is by district, not at large. The San Juan School District is by district, not at large. And so there's a whole bunch of changes going on in the way electeds and the way governance works. With the change and the makeup of the San Juan Unified School District, what does a successful partnership with the San Juan Unified School District look like? And how will you contribute to the effort? We have about nine, we have 90 seconds to talk about education, the relationship between San Juan Unified School District and the city of Citrus Heights.
All right. Well, first off, my understanding is that with the redistricting, Citrus Heights does get a little bit more of a voice at the table. And so with that, as a parent, I am really, really happy to see that happen. And how will I support the process of redistricting? By having open lines of communication, by working with resource teams through the school to ensure that the needs of our residents, our children, are being met at the school level. If there are grants available, if there is things that the city can help with to make sure that we are getting the safe ways to the schools, that we are getting, we are working with the resource teams to make sure that whatever needs our children have with the voices of the parents there, that those needs are advocated for and that city council can make policy that helps drive towards mutual goals for a strategic plan and for the betterment of the San Juan School District.
I love this question. COVID brought a real opportunity for me. I was coordinator of a volunteer project here in Citrus Heights, serving all 12 schools that we have, elementary, junior high, and high schools. And I got to know personally the principals and the office staff and several of the teachers during COVID. Bring to them resources that they could use in a COVID-driven lockdown environment. We brought supplies, equipment, headsets, achievement awards for the kids. We're doing well under the COVID restrictions. But more importantly, I got to talk with the San Juan School District administration about what and where we were going and what we're doing. One of our achievements has been getting them to allow us to build a community room at one of our elementary schools, one of the only community rooms in the northern part of Sacramento County and the San Juan Unified School District. The only other one is on the South Central End. The division of San Juan Unified School District in the districts is an absolute boon for us because for the first time in 20 years, the majority of the city of Citrus Heights has a board member dedicated to that board and dedicated to our city and the needs of our students to help us grow and change this educational problem and process that has existed for so many years. The future's children. And we really want to have better schools. So we attract younger families into Citrus Heights. We live, my wife and I live in a gated community on Oak Avenue. And we are among the younger folks in our community. But it is changing and I'm very happy to see that. But it's very important to use the two seats we'll have and the dedicated board member to make the schools better, make them, help them to make things better. I, I, I look, I go into schools and they haven't changed in 100 years, some of them. When I was an art director, we had amphitheater type thing. So we had to talk among everybody. And it was, it was great. It wasn't stupid lines and chairs. So that's important. We have to build for the children because they are the future residents of Citrus Heights. And as we attract younger families, we're going to attract people who spend more. And that will benefit our businesses. That's all I got to say. All my kids are brothers.
All right. Last summer in the heat, I was walking with parents who wanted those two board seats. I called the media. I got our council to sign a resolution because I knew that that representation truly mattered. These are, these are the kids who go to our skate park, who go to our mall, in our community. And I knew the two board members who are supporting our kids that will actually have no choice but to show up to our education on two-by-twos will be held accountable. Citrus Heights, fun fact, Citrus Heights is the only city in the San Juan Unified School District. And it's my understanding that we have the highest Title I schools. That means we have the highest number of students who are poor and economically repressed. We have the highest number of students who English is a second language and they're not getting the resources they deserve. And I'm not sitting at a council meeting doing my day job, being a mother and a wife either at the school, fighting them about the education for my autistic son. And I shouldn't have to do that because we should have the folks on that board who care and who are responsible and who are giving us the resources we need, not cutting them back and giving them to other unincorporated areas, but giving our city our due.
You know, fortunately, Citrus Heights is going to have a little bit of a voice on the school board now. I'm glad to see that. Unfortunately, I would have rather have seen them with five trustee areas opposed to seven. Yeah, it gave us an opportunity for two seats, but we're probably only going to have one. And one board out of five is a lot stronger than one board out of seven. And I sense a bit of frustration on the part of the city in the two-by-twos with the school district. They seem to get frustrated not getting anywhere with it. Well, now that we'll have a voice on it, I think we need to get active with it and be persistent. Another unfortunate thing is that the superintendent is going to be retiring this year. And it just happened to coincide to be they're, they're doing their selection process just prior to going to the seven board members. And sometimes I get the impression that the school board works for the superintendent and it shouldn't be the other way around. The superintendent works at the pleasure of the school board. I'm not sure they understand that. So I would like to see whoever represents this city on that school board get more active and get more involved and give us a voice in how the school district is running.
I think we are at a rare opportunity. Many feel that we did not have a voice in the city of Citrus Heights on the, the school board. And now we do. Even if that one individual is not someone we would have chosen, I think we have an opportunity to bombard them with our opinion. Because now they're actually charged with being a steward of that particular area which we call home. So it is our responsibility to be active in communicating with those elected officials once they become known to us in what we want. We want improvement. We do have 12 schools that are controlled by San Juan Unified. And I took a cursory look at the grade schools report and we are not doing well. We have six out of nine of our elementary K, K8 schools below average. Two out of nine are average. And we only have one. That's above average. Our middle school, the one we all know and love, is below average according to this report. And our high schools, two out of two, below average. And I am not saying that it is because we do not have wonderful families who support these schools or even incredible teachers, because I've talked to a lot of teachers. But we as a, a community need to surround and encourage our representatives to actually represent us. That's our job. That's my job. That's your job. And I think we need to be more active in pursuing that voice.
Well, thank you, Portia, for jumping the gun on the next question. The rest of you have an opportunity now, worn ash, as to what the big project is that you would like to see. So what is the next big project for Citrus Heights?
How long?
90 seconds. The next big project for Citrus Heights.
Well, I think physically speaking, the next big project is that Sunrise Tomorrow Plan. But strategically speaking, for me, the next big project is a rapid response team to handle business complaints and ensure that our businesses are being secured and supported and the safety of our community is upheld. I am very worried that without proper citations and documentation, that nuisances are not going to be handled, that there will be no empowerment for our law enforcement officers or our businesses. Right now, if I were to call and say I have somebody shooting up heroin against the glass of my restaurant, I am informed to not approach them and wait for response. But if response takes too long, I lose customers. So then business owners fight back. We walk out there and say, get out of here, go away, don't do your drugs here. And unfortunately, at that point, no documentation can be given, no citations can be given, there is no paper trail or algorithm push that will continue to say this is a problem that needs to be addressed. So I would put resources towards a rapid response team to get the drug addiction side of homelessness handled immediately.
Okay, there's two ways I'm going to approach this. I'm going to split it in half. Even though you're elected to a district, you still represent the whole city. And so as a member of the city council, I would very definitely be focused on the citywide development of the Sunrise Mall project and on the growing enforcement of special units within our police department to handle the significant problems that occur in our neighborhoods on occasional basis that needed to be addressed. So the rapid response type teams can address those issues. In District Four, we have got the center of Silver Corners North. We've got the Center of Economic Development for this area. Auburn Boulevard is a wonderful opportunity in growth. It's under processed now and we need to have smart growth and development there. The Auburn Boulevard properties, the Silver School properties, which are open, that are going to be developed, the potential Pumpkin Farm properties that we don't know the potential Pumpkin Farm Properties, that we don't know yet what's going to happen. Those are significant growth issues to serve our city, to help us build and to help us build strength in our residential and our educational and our business, uh, district within District Four. I really want to focus on things we can do right now. The Sunrise Mall project is something that's going to be fabulous for the city. It's going to take a long time. But we have corridors of traffic that we can make safer with more police enforcement, more rapid response, and helping businesses to develop along Auburn and Citrus and Sunrise and Madison. A little bit of Madison touches Citrus Heights. So that's what, that's what I envision. It's as simple as that. We've got to do some, focus on some things that we can do now.
Oh, no, I got more. You know what goes great with a satellite campus? Citywide broadband. So after attending the Cal Cities Conference with our city manager, I learned about how broadband access has transformed cities similar to Citrus Heights. It's connected students, working families, and local businesses in a way that we've never seen before. And it's a great opportunity for our low-income students and low-income families to have access to technology. You can't get a job, you can't look for a job, you can't fix up a resume unless you want to go to the library. And you can do this from your house if you have citywide broadband. And there are tons of state and federal grants to help us to do that. And that's what we're going to try and do in Citrus Heights.
I think the biggest project is definitely going to be the Sunrise Tomorrow Project. But since it is a twenty-year project and it's been the economic engine for the city for so long, we're going to have to focus our attention on other aspects of the city. We need to make sure that, uh, Sunrise's specific plan is followed through properly, but we need to try and incentivize other businesses to come into the area, especially as Auburn Boulevard finishes up its development. And I think Ash's, uh, plans on community engagement and vibrancy are going to help out a lot. I mean, this city is not, what's the word? It's not a destitute city. It's not a bad-looking city. But we can make it more attractive, and I think Ash is on the right track just trying to bring the community, get the community involved, the community engagement aspect of it. And at the same time, send out the economic development team to try and attract other businesses to come into the city. Because we're going to need to generate some revenue somehow. We want to have a stronger police department. We want to move forward with the Sunrise Tomorrow Project. We're still going to have to bring in some money, and the property taxes are not going to do it. So we need to try, look at bringing other businesses back into the city and try to attract money from outside of the city, bring people to spend their money in our city.
I have very conservative financial goals, and so I'm not one to say, you know what, we need to add a new project. I'd rather look at the projects we have already approved, already put our mind and our muscle behind, and to see those through. I'm, again, so delighted with the Sunrise Tomorrow Plan, and I think we really need to commit to that and put all of our resources to that particular success along with the corridors, the economic corridors that contribute to it, Greenback, Sunrise, and Auburn. I think if we concentrate our efforts rather than overly diversify our attention, we can really make, make a splash in a significant way where most people will see our city.
I'm going to slide down. I didn't expect to get this far when I originally scheduled this. And I will go to my second, some of my secondary questions. And I have one, most of the people who are voting are not here. So most of your voters are not here. Some of them would like to know, what are you going to do to make Citrus Heights communities more livable? And what can we do to attract people to Citrus Heights? We've talked about economics, we've talked about all that. But what can we do to make a life on the people living on the side streets where we all have our houses? What can we do to make Citrus Heights a more livable and a travel city that's going to attract people? So we're talking about attraction to Citrus Heights and making our communities better. This is number ten, if you're tracking, Andrew. We'll have ninety seconds, and now you get to start.
I think you're right. I think we are on the right track. I think that in the last few years, the city, the city council, the city employees, city management has done a great job of making the physical changes necessary to improve the look of Citrus Heights, to draw people here. I've talked to several people who have come to Citrus Heights recently, as I've been going around the schools, and do things that they like about it. We are still a very affordable and livable city. We still have what it takes to draw people here. We just need to continue to build upon those things and to make sure that we are improving upon them as we draw folks and we try to improve where we are and what we are doing. I look at Citrus Heights and I see the opportunities before us that really are going to be the driving force for the next ten to fifteen years. We don't need people looking in the rearview mirror trying to figure out what we ought to do next. We need people looking through the windshield and trying to see what the prospects are, what the future is, and how we can best get there. And that's a collaborative effort between the community, the council, and the city staff and administration. We are on the right track. I was very impressed by the trails that were being built. I mean, it's gone, I, but I live right near the Sea of Art, and so that's making more of the trail things. It's good to get people out and walking around. I, I also mentioned trees earlier. I'm not a nut on trees. I love trees. And they make things beautiful. We've got to make things more beautiful. We also have to make things safe. Our street lighting is not good. I used to work in India, and there was better street lighting in Bangalore than there is here. So that cuts down on crime. We've got to do everything to make it little. We've got to think of a kid. Would a kid like to grow up in Citrus Heights? Think of it that way. If you take yourself back to being a twelve-year-old kid, what would you want in the city? Then tell the city council what to do. We're not here to allow the answers. You're here to listen. Okay?
Building community connections is key to engaging our neighborhoods. When my husband and I moved here a little over seven years ago, there were not a lot of community events participating. And slowly, the feeling that we're here began to be discontinued for multiple reasons. Um, I like to remind folks that the city is responsible for public right of way. And I think that if they have that down pat, we, we keep our areas clean, safe, we do what we have to do. I also like to believe that council members are responsible for supporting community connections. As a member of the council, I participate in local cleanups. I host street community events for families and support local events, hosted by Kiwanis, Single Mom Strong, and our neighborhood assoc- our neighborhood associations, and many other things. If you haven't heard about Bubbles and Pops at the Park, you are missing out. Um, we have to model the community engagement we want others to participate in. And as a result, we'll be attracting residents into our communities. So model the engagement you want to see. You'll bring the right people around because we'll look like we're the hotspot for all the things to be.
You know, to make it better for the people that live here currently, I think it's, uh, community engagement, getting to know the community. But in trying to draw people to Citrus Heights, I think it's the schools. I really feel right now the city should be making a focus on encouraging people to get active with what's going on with that school board race. That's going to be crucial because it's like Al was saying. You know, what's the negative impact of when you look up Citrus Heights and it's a nice place to live? What's the bottom line? It's the schools. And even if you don't have kids that go to these schools, you think you don't care? If you get these schools running the way they should be, your property values are going to skyrocket. The value, the property values all throughout the city are going to blow up. And I think that's really important. And, you know, we're an aging community. We're generally older than the young, you know, school-aged children. That's why all our schools are closed because forty years ago, they needed all these schools. Now they don't. So I would really encourage the city to try and get out to the community and say, hey, get involved, get active, get to know who is running your district and vote for them.
In walking around and talking to my neighbors, I noticed a pattern of two thought processes. Neighbor number one basically has a ring on their door and will not answer. And so I leave my information. This is an individual that I'm afraid moved to our city because it's highly affordable, but doesn't want to get involved in our city. And that is too bad because we have so much to offer. Neighbor number two that I find the most pleasurable conversation is that they move with purpose to our city because it's affordable, because it's walkable, because of our trails, because of how we run our government and how our city is run, and the improvements that they notice because they care to. We need to be a community that is like neighbor number two. You and I in this room are the small percentage of people who care to get involved and listen to individuals like us who have some ideas and dreams. But what about the other areas of our city who are comprised of individuals that don't care, that don't let their voice, and rather complain? I started running because I'm not a complainer. I'm a doer and a joiner. And so in order for our city to encourage any kind of change, we need to encourage everyone to get involved in the economic engine that is our city.
Um, I agree with the mayor that we need to make us a model community that everybody else can look to and mimic. And council members do need to be responsible for the support to their community. I'm active in my neighborhood association. I go to every single meeting for Area Ten every month. And what I've noticed is what Jane said, there's not a lot of activity, but the activity there, the neighbors that do come have a strong voice. It's very intimidating to go before council, to stand at the dais and say, hey, I have this problem. And then you don't get feedback, right? Council can't, council can't talk to us and tell us, oh, wow, sorry, that's happening. Let's talk about it. But at a neighborhood meeting, they can. Council members need to be engaged with the neighborhood associations, be a listening ear, willing to amplify the voices of the community when they go back to the dais. Um, we should approve community grants as often as possible. I'm really, the development team is working on that. Look at the parameters. Do they make sense? Is it going to help get them passed? Sponsor more city events. Work with the NAs and the residents to make sure that they know of all the neighborhood improvement funds. They know of the block grants. They know of everything that is out there for them. Um, empower our women's clubs, lines, clubs, Rotary, Single Moms Strong, all the other service organizations to pick up some projects. Let's make the neighborhood better just through unity, through engagement. Um, I love the trail system. Let's, let's do some events out there. Let's draw everybody together. And a splash pad. Kids want a splash pad.
There's, there's more to just being a council member than, you know, showing up at city council meetings. You have a bunch of regional boards, regional activities. What are the regional activities that you would like to participate on?
Steve, I'm very, very good.
Just sixty seconds. I'm, oh, just sixty seconds is what should be.
I'd like to have a problem with police force. I don't, I, I want to make the good policemen stay. We want to make it a good force, a good place for them to work, a safe environment for them. It's very important. If we have good police who stay and stay with the community, we will all benefit. That is my, my objective.
Gosh, what am I not doing? Sacramento Area Council of Governments, the Vice Chair of Policy Innovation Committee, that's where I got that fifteen million dollars transportation funding, would love to continue to work into that. The Police Activities League, I, I represent on that also. Um, California League of Cities, I am our vice, our, our vice president, first vice president. And I am the president of caucus, and I'm involved with all that from the top down. Governor's appointee for housing, I work with the homeless council, uh, advisory council for the mayor. I want to stay involved. As much time as I have to offer and get involved, if there's a project, if there's a board, I'm going to be there.
You know, with the Sunrise Tomorrow Project, I think I would really like to represent the city in attending this Sunrise Marketplace meetings. I know Steve's big with, uh, regional transit, that spotter call could be opening up. I'd be interested in that, maybe the sewer district. Um, but I really think the most important one at this point in time is going to be the school board. Whoever sits on those two byes with the school board, especially with the new superintendent, is going to have a great impact on the future of how the school district goes.
I didn't know we got to list our, our wish list here tonight. Um, I'm going to offend a few people, especially Tim, because I really love that library board. Um, I believe when I started reading, it opened up my world, and I think reading is, is a gateway to all good things, whether you want to advance and be successful in your life or, or simply go on a mental adventure. I think that's so important. Of course, I've talked a lot about, uh, economic development and production of our economic corridors, and I would like to sit on anything regionally that talks about economic development that touches Citrus Heights. And finally, I'm with Mike on anything regarding our district, our school district. You know, we have to get that in order because our kids are our future, as was said here, and we need to support the good development of them.
This is a really good question for me because I'll be honest. I have not looked into all of the bazillion committees and organizations that are out there. But I can tell you after reading the budget, I would be very interested in being on our finance committee. I would like to take part in planning. Um, I would look at the policy committee, the transportation committee. I would like to help come up with innovative solutions to our traffic and know an improved ways of mobility. Um, that would be very exciting for me to be there. If there is a committee that is for, um, engagement and outreach, especially for our youth. As a mother of five, my heart is always there in preparing our future generations um, to have a quality, quality life in a safe community, and I would love to take part in that.
Citrus Heights has two major north-south thoroughfares that go from Placer County to all the way down to Rancho Cordova. We have two major east-west roadways that cross through Citrus Heights. You can't get from Folsom to I eighty without going through Citrus Heights unless you want to go around the other freeways. I would love to be part of the transportation board discussions on trying to bring more money, more commitment, and more efforts to improve those roadways, increase the safety and the flow of traffic, particularly during our heavy busy transit hours. And if you look at the car counts over the years, we have got a tremendous amount of traffic that passes through our city. It doesn't do a whole lot else. We need to have an improvement on the Antelope-I-E interchange. We need to battle for those funds to get that done. It's been out there. It's been on the front process with the STA, but it has never been brought to the forefront so that we can make up our mind and we can get those funds and those projects started.
Thank you. I'm going to have two more questions, and we've, we've danced around Citrus Heights and law enforcement. We've talked about the great job they're doing with homelessness and the great job that they do overall. I'd like to give you sixty seconds to talk about what public safety and law enforcement means in Citrus Heights. Portia, you get to do that.
It means everything. It's the foundation of our community. My children depend on a friendly face from an officer. I depend on a friendly face from an officer. If something bad happens to me, you know, if it's unfortunate, it happens. Uh, my car was broken into twice when I first got elected, and it was a sigh of relief to be able to call the nine reps, you know, and have a friendly person walk into that, send an officer out and take care of that. I'm glad that our doors to the I'm glad that our doors to the department are finally open back to the public because it's a place where we all can go. I used to love going by and dropping off treats to the officers and maybe just giving them a personal thank you. And my children went to go and pet the canines. Our officers are part of that community engagement piece. It's part of that quality of life piece that we really need to depend on as a city to attract other people to us.
Yeah, I need to keep building with the police department. We've got a ways to go to recuperate from COVID. And I appreciate the job that the police do. And that's why we incorporated in the first place. You know, and right now, I talk about community engagement. Those police officers out there are the city's community voice. You know, I interact more with the police officers than I do with anybody else in the city. And I'm on the planning commission. You know, so I fully support the police. I think they're doing a great job. They're a little bit understaffed right now. But, you know, when I look at what goes on in the news, it's like... They are... The relationship we have with our police is just... Perfect. Could get better, but they need more money.
I come from a family of military officers who then became police officers. And it was really so much fun as a kid to watch my uncles all become uh, wearers of one uniform and then transition to wear another uniform. The sense of pride I have whenever I see our police officers is, as you can imagine, overwhelming almost. I love talking to our police officers because they all mention that they love working for our city, that they love engaging with our neighborhood associations. They love coming and reporting the statistics, even when they're not so great. Because we support them. And they deserve every bit of support that we have. So I am one hundred percent behind our police officers. I can't wait till they're back to full force.
I will mimic everything that everybody else said. Our law enforcement here at Citrus Heights is superb. I work a lot with the South County Sheriff at my restaurant. And I've had situations inside Citrus Heights where I've had to interact with our police force. It's dramatically different. I love our police department and I'm proud of the job they do. We need to keep funding going. We need to ensure that they're fully staffed. They are a big part of trust. Trust our residents has that the city is supporting them and keeping them safe and valuing their quality of life. Their interactions at the neighborhood meetings, giving us the statistics, making sure that they communicate well, that we understand what's going on, that we know our part as residents, as council members, as members of this city in the coexistence process. So building those relationships stronger, keeping the events going, where the city police can just have a presence in our community and let everybody know that they're there for service, that they are there to serve our community and keep us safe, I think will improve what's going on.
Okay, get over what she says and hang on to that for a second. One thing we've learned: quality does not equal quality. And we've got a fantastic, qualified, and great police department. I was on the original community committee that decided to vote for us to have our own police department. And I saw that vote. I saw what the failures of not having our own police department had while we had the sheriff's office, taking for a department. They just did not give us the overall service we needed. We have graduated from our police department, I believe it's five, chiefs of police in other jurisdictions in this state. Those are our folks that we put out there. I don't know the number of commanders we have graduated to other police agencies to serve them with the same quality, professional ethics, and the professionalism that we give in Citrus Heights. Absolutely, unequivocally, I am very proud of what this city has done with forming our police department and what that police department has done in serving our community. I'm going to say that over too. Police department, and again, it's all part of living in a safe community. That means our roads don't have huge models, so we lose control of our car. That means we actually have DUI checkpoints off regularly. It also means that we control speeding. It also means that we need to make sure that our smart streets are smart streets so traffic flows better. Sunrise Highway is really, or Sunrise Boulevard, or Sunrise Avenue, that's a city around here, is really, that means that we get times. But safety is everybody's concern. And that's why everybody should be looking at these neighborhood websites where you can see what's going on here. So it's everybody's job, not just, not just the council members.
So I just have to ask one more question. Did the press get the pictures they needed?
Yes.
All right. So we're good with, we gotta keep the press happy. Otherwise, nothing works. So we're ready to do the concluding question. And you have, you can do, we'll have two minutes to talk in whatever way you want as to why we should be voting for you. I'm just going to start with you, Michael. Ready?
You know, like I was saying earlier, I planned for this for six years. I, six years ago, I realized that these council members were not going to be around forever. So I ran. I wanted to get to experience, see how the city works. And in the last six years, I've kept up that interest. I've gotten more interested in stuff, gotten more involved with stuff as it's gone along. You know, I've been president of Reach. I got involved with her when I saw the homelessness issue. And I wanted to understand more about how everything works, how the city works. I've learned a lot being on the planning commission. I've managed businesses in the city for almost twenty-five years. I've seen it grow. I remember when the birds were in the birdcage, you know. I still see that clock, old clock tower sitting out on Farrell's Boulevard. So I've seen the good and I've seen the bad. And things have changed. And like I said before, I wish we had a crystal ball to see the future. But I think Citrus Heights has really evolved with the times. I'm glad I bought my house here thirty years ago. I'm proud to live in Citrus Heights, and I want to be of service to Citrus Heights. You know, I, this is not a stepping stone for me. I have no plans on moving into any other, I'm not a politician. Um, I'm doing this to serve my community. You know, I do a lot of volunteer work. It gives me that gratification. Not doing it for me, my ego. I just want to be of service to this community because this community, I think, is good for me. Thank you.
When I came to Citrus Heights, we were looking for a place to raise a family. In addition to that, we found a city that was debt-free, had money in the bank, and it was well-run with a lean government. You know, Citrus Heights has never failed to deliver on that ideal for me and my family. I know I can be a good steward for the city and the city resources and goodwill in order to continue to attract good, hard-working people to our city. I don't have an axe to grind or a pen to shoot, so I can be fair when listening to complaints or challenges. I have a strong sense of fiscal responsibility, so I can be discerning when evaluating financial matters, especially when it comes to tax proposals. Allow me to give back to the community by voting for me, Mary Jane Lopez-Taff, for Citrus Heights City Council District Two in November. If you need more information, voteforjane.com is your place.
I'm going to tell you a tale. So in two thousand eight, in the midst of a housing crisis, my husband and I had the brilliant idea of opening a restaurant. Uh, we began with two servers and we built a successful, inclusive team of twenty-four. We have a Down Syndrome adult. We have many people of color. We have many women. And we have autistic individuals. We promote inclusivity and unity. We survived a pandemic riddled with poor policy, impossible resource procurement, labor shortages, and crimes against business. We were strategic and responsive and redeveloped our business model over and over again as many times as it took to get through. During that time, we kept everybody employed. We worked on a tight budget. And we found a way to feed ten thousand people who were food insecure. I'm saddened by the neglect of our CHPD. Their resources are outdated. They're overextended during the labor shortage. I'm frustrated with open drug use, daily litter, and abuses against my community, and I will do better. We need to improve our fiscal sustainability without raising taxes. We need to empower our law enforcement officers and resource teams to address the homelessness. And we need a community leader who will listen, assess the resources and parameters, and respond with aligned policy. I'm smart. I'm strategic. I'm kind. I'm empathetic. And I'm a servant leader. I listen to others and I will amplify the voice of the unheard. I feel that with empathy and strategy, we can become the city of choice for residents and businesses to prosper and thrive, and a model of neighborhood engagement. I believe in Ashbeeny. I believe in our city. And I believe in myself. I'm the change that you want for your communities. I'm the right direction for our cities. And I'm the right choice for City Council District Five. Natalie Price is running for Citrus Heights.
A little different approach here. All good answers, all good folks coming up here tonight, things to say. Let's understand what these folks here face. There's this thing going on out there about the city had thirty-two to thirty-eight million dollars. And they blew it. And they did all this. And they did all of that. Let's understand what happened. That original thirty, twenty-some million actually dollars went for building the community center, paid cash. Building the city hall paid cash. We lost two billion dollars a year in bailout money. We had executive positions, eight, I believe, with top salary levels going on at the time. A lot of money went out that didn't make the need to go out. But all of those things happened with the very first administration in the city manager's office of Citrus Heights. Everything since then has been under change. And our city council has done a great job to do that. And I am proud to say I was part of the city operations on the planning commission and on the city council during that time. Let's make this campaign about the future of Citrus Heights. We've got good choices. We've got good thoughts. We've got some good ideas going on. But all of this is going to go for naught if we don't have good, sound leadership filling in behind our retiring council members and able to stand up to the rearview mirror thoughts and processes that some people want to throw into the existence of our city. We're far too good for that. We're far too strong as a city to not keep growing in a positive direction. What I do offer in running for city council for District Four is solid, positive leadership, looking at the growth of District Four and some of the largest open areas for redevelopment in our city. I've got proven leadership, and I've got real solutions. And it's Al Fox for City Council District Four. Alfox.org.
I'm seventy-five. I've been in business for a long, long time. I've been in advertising. I've been in television. I was in mergers and acquisitions for years. To support for the last fifteen years, I've worked at big clients like Sony and Empire State, that always have a place. I'm not surprised by that. I've seen a lot of stuff. I think I could be of real help. And I can remember outside of degree and urban geography. I know how thick traffic flows. I can bring all that to the table. Uh, I'm not going in for the money. I mean, wow. And I just think I'm kind of an unusual trove of information and experience. And I'd like to bring that to Citrus Heights. I'm running for District Two, Steve Durn.
Oh, to be honest. First, I want to thank the chamber for putting this together. I know how much effort goes into planning this forum. I also want to thank all of you who attended tonight. As a working mom, I understand, you know, eight o'clock, it's a lot of time to give to the listeners about what all of us have to say. We all have great ideas. We all have great perspective. My colleagues call me Positive Ocean. When I got on council four years ago, I was determined that I was going to be positive and find solutions. So when a problem was brought to me, it wasn't something I felt like I had to air out and leak down on Facebook or in our neighborhood groups. I said, well, how do we solve the problem? What's wrong? Talk to me. Tell me about it. We don't have enough community events. We don't like the way the direction of the city is going. There's something wrong with fiscal management. Okay, cool. Let's fix it. Let's relook at that budget. Let's find a city manager who's going to help catapult us with Sunrise Mall and handle that with the grace that Ash has done so far. When it comes down to our PD, we had to make hard decisions. I said, look, but as soon as we can, we will fix it. But in the meantime, we don't want to go to jail for having an unbiased budget. I'm too pretty for prison. And the one thing I've learned by out there knocking doors, talking to neighbors, hosting free events, I pay for all that out of my pocket because I can afford to. But more importantly, I understand the importance of being an engaged elected official. And I've learned as I'm talking to individuals in our community that you want to be heard. My goal is to listen, to talk to you. And this is not the last opportunity for us to have these conversations. I'll still be out here doing the same thing tomorrow, the next day, after November, probably until my kids go to college and put me in a home. I'm here. I'm Portia Middleton. I'm running for city council District Five. Portiamiddleton.com.
All right, you can clap now. This is really hard work.